Good evening. Welcome to Tuesday, December 17th, 2019 Selectmen's meeting. We're having a meeting tonight since we're not meeting on Christmas Eve. Is all the selectmen are here, the town managers, oh, Ed will be here. He will be, he's running late. The town manager is here, the town clerk just ran out, and other than that, we're here alone. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a very small agenda tonight. Is we're gonna skip through a lot of these things. Is we do have our meeting minutes from December 10th.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from December 10th as presented.
Second.
Is Mark you were absent, so is all those in favor? And what I'm stenching. Yes, since no public is here, we won't have any public comment. We have no public hearing. Is I did have a note from James for, for the Envision Berwick. It says if you have any last minute holiday shopping, is they have sweatshirts, t-shirts, stickers, and more to be purchased for the holidays at berwickmaine.org/community/sharp. Or you can come to the town hall and pick them up here. We are in the very early stages of planning year two of Bring Your Launchers to Sullivan Square. Year one was a major success, and we look forward to making it even better in year two. And then finally, the comprehensive plan survey will be ending soon. Paper copies are available at the town hall, or the survey can be taken online at berwickmaine.org/survey. Went down through, we have no department appoint reports, no appointments. Unfinished business, did you want to take time for any town managers' report?
Yeah, I just got a few things. Just want to make sure the public knows that the sand and salt mix is available to the public for these awful storms. The gates are usually open when the crew is out sanding and plowing. The sand and salt shed is to the left of the salt shed. The salt shed stays locked because we've had a lot of abuse. But there should be plenty of sand and salt available to the public. And that's really, we're pushing ahead with the construction and fire station. And we've been talking to architects about trying to get this building in ADA compliant. Looking at an elevator, which we can talk about after the first of the year. Otherwise, we're getting ready for the budget.
Where would you put an elevator in this building?
Where? Where will we put one? Well, there's been two proposals since I've been here. We've talked about, one, they thought would go in the center of the building upstairs where the entryway is.
In between, if you look at the auditorium, well, if you look at the auditorium on the second floor, the doors going in, there's three sets of doors. Is one of the proposals was to take where the middle section of doors is and putting an elevator in there to service all three floors, but...
There's another proposal that we talked with Mike Lassel about yesterday, and I like this one. Is to be, to build on this side of the front part of the building and have a separate section built. And we could go up to the third floor with that. It has to be five feet from the foundation. They really don't want to build right directly on the foundation because it's old. And it would cost more if we had to go in and reinforce the foundation and stuff.
What about, what can't we do with that stairway, the other stairway on that side?
Well, egress.
We got, we got egress over here.
I know, chief, fire chief.
The front door, the front door, no, can't use that either?
No.
For egress?
But he's, he's got some ideas that we talked about yesterday, actually, with him, about building up on the outside. You'd have the parking, front parking lot would be a handicap accessible. And you could go right to the entryway to that. So that would work really well.
I'm sorry.
You gotta have to take it out of brick. Match the building.
It would match the building, but it would be, you wouldn't compromise this structure. Plus, you, it would not require them to do work in the building while we're open.
Yeah, cutting through the floors and the foundation.
Oh, yeah. So it's something that we're gonna talk more about later on in the workshop. But I kind of like that idea. It's a little bit less obtrusive, and it should, these guys are pretty...
Yeah, I spoke, I spoke briefly with both the guys from Landry and French and Port City at our last meeting last week, just briefly about it. And they, they said the same thing, you know. The easiest way in an old building like this would probably be to do some kind of external structure. You know, the, the task would be to make it, you know, blend in with the rest of the building.
Yeah.
So it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb.
Right.
Yeah, and it's on the back, you know, side.
In the corner, yeah.
He's, Mike said he'd do some renditions for us to give us an idea what it would look like. And so after the first of the year, we can talk more about that and the costs associated with getting that ready. If we're gonna do it for the upcoming June election, we'll have to hustle to get some estimates done. I'm gonna ask Landry and French.
You could build it, call it the host house, or part of it the host house.
There you go. So, yeah, we've kind of been working on that, and I thought I was gonna talk with Port City today, but that got called off. So, but Mike's prices are, I've asked him to put together costs associated with that, and they're not bad. So...
I'm sure they're not good either.
Also, I just wanted to mention that James is part of the planning and part of the Brownfield grant, had the opportunity to go out to Los Angeles to an ICMA Brownfield convention. And he came away with some really good stuff, and I told him, I asked him to put it together, and I'd like him to present to you what he came away to. Didn't cost the town a dime, which was nice. It's all on, out of the Brownfield money.
He liked that, didn't he?
Oh, he liked that a lot. You know, he, he just gets to meet with a lot of different people.
Oh, yeah, he's a good kid.
Yeah, from, throughout the country and what's going on everywhere. And they talked a lot about small grants for small communities. Sort of like, well, our grants weren't small, but, so he's got some good ideas. And he's, when you go to those things, as you know, you come away excited about what you heard and want to bring that back to your community.
What do you think, you think he'd make a good town manager someday?
I think he would, absolutely. That's his goal. He's finishing up his master's degree this year in public administration and policy.
It'd be nice if he, when you retire, just to slide him right in.
Talk about that some more, too.
You dislike him that much?
He, he's got some good skills, and he's passionate about this community.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And he's got a depth of knowledge for this community that you won't get out of a new person.
No, that's what's good about him.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll talk more down the road when I'm ready to retire, Mike. And I'm not there yet. We're having too much fun. So, good stuff going on here, but that's what I have.
Alrighty. Is I have no Selectmen's communications. That brings us to our accounts payable. They have a water warrant, 025, from December 19th, 2019. The amount is $9,858.40. And I have an account payable warrant, 2025, for December 19th, 2019. The amount is $646,415.82. So I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll check it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Go down through, we have no more new business or anything. Is no public comment. Is, is anybody else? We will be coming back in from executive session.
Yes, we will.
Because we will be making the decision. So I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for Title I, subsection 405.60, for the discussion of a labor contract.
My second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Yes, we will be coming back in after the meeting.
We voted to come out of our executive session. We had a discussion about labor contract for the police department. And it's been in negotiations for a few months here. The town manager reports that there's been very good negotiation. And I will make a motion that we ratify the agreement between the main police, main association of police and the town of Burwick for the police department as presented to us.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other business other than one motion.
Motion adjourned.
All those in favor?
You want a second?
Thank you all.